Let's call the meeting order for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty five, start with the flag.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, rules are all signed?
Yes.
Prove the agenda.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I need to add, I'm fire chief on the department having committee updates.
As a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Can I move to approve the agenda as an amendment?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, okay. Minutes, ten minutes, oh, a minute, eleven minutes of the last meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April thirtieth minute, meeting and the May seventh meeting.
Here, a second?
A second.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update.
Okay, it is the beginning of the month, which starts us off with New York County Sheriff's Office log. First, you should know that Deputy Samborn's Cruiser was out of Acton, Chapley for fourteen hours in April. Notable events, the first one occurred on April second, the deputy located a vehicle after a caller reported that a silver Mazda had been following him on Route one oh nine. The caller reported that the same vehicle was following him and his wife yesterday. They had no plates and extensive cosmetic damage. Deputies were able to locate the vehicle and the individual, who was a transient from New Hampshire, denied the claims. The Mazda was unregistered, so it was towed. The individual summons for operating an unregistered vehicle. On April fourth, deputy investigated a violation of protection order and conditions against an individual, female individual in Acton. She was in contact with a subject that she was prohibited to have contact with, so she was arrested. April ninth, an individual thirty-eight from Acton was arrested for domestic violence assault and refusing to submit to an arrest. She was arrested and she's being held on bail. April tenth, deputy responded to a home on Newfield Road in Chapley for a family disturbance. It was reported that the forty-year-old male had been depressed and had just recently lost his job. There were concerns for his safety and he was transported to Main Health in Sanford. April thirteenth, deputies investigated a complaint where an individual twenty-six from Acton was reported to have been operating his Nissan Altima intoxicated and had just stopped at the trading post. He was located in operation of the vehicle, had just purchased a bottle of Fireball. He failed the roadside test and was arrested for an OUI, no bail was allowed. On the fourteenth, deputies were dispatched to a home on Emory Mills in Chapley for an intoxicated female who was disorderly. Contact was made with a forty-six-year-old from Florida. She had not committed a crime and was just warned of her disorderly conduct. She was upset that she had recently been kicked out of her home. On the sixteenth of April, deputy dealt with an attempted extortion case. The caller, who was from Chapley, they were trying to scam him using Facebook and Google chat accounts. The caller confirmed that he had sent an inappropriate picture to someone that he thought was a consenting female. Turns out, they weren't, and it was all recorded. The investigation is ongoing. It's Tom's face. Did he tell you off? He's like, did that really happen? I can just see him think of that.
I guess he does.
It did, yes. Four sixteen, deputy responded to a home on Ross Corner Road in Chapley after a stolen vehicle was found on a trail behind the property. Vehicle was stolen from another home on Ross Corner Road. The owner was made aware of the location and is working on recovery of his vehicle. Four seventeen, deputies was called to a home on the Cross Road in Chapley for a burglary complaint. The victim was not cooperative in this complaint and did not meet with the deputies at the house, and they're still looking for them. On the seventeenth, deputies responded to a home on Newfield Road in Chapley for disturbance. Two subjects going through a divorce were very upset with one another. No crime was committed and the situation was mediated. April eighteenth, deputies responded to a home on Cross Road in Chapley for an overdose. Rescue arrived on scene and was able to use Narcan to bring the subject back to life. Subject was on probation and the probation officer was notified. April eighteenth, deputies responded to Acton for a report from Stratford County that a suicidal female was in the area and was actively cutting herself. Sheriff's officer was pinging her cellphone. The area was searched extensively, but they did not find her. Four nineteen, deputies responded to a home on Mills Road in Acton to investigate a stolen vehicle out of Sanford. The suspect's phone was pinging to the area, but the homeowner stated the individual is not there. The vehicle was not located. The suspect, the suspect was out on a warrant for robbery in Connecticut, is on probation, and investigation is ongoing. Four twenty-two, deputy investigated death on Trails End Road in Chapley. Where is that? Trails End Road, I haven't heard of it. A sixty-year-old male from Concord, New Hampshire passed away from an unknown medical event, possibly cardiac related, nothing suspicious. And the last one brings us to the twenty-seventh of April. Deputies responded to a home on Gore Road in Chapley for domestic disturbance. Male was arrested for assault and obstructing a report. So that is the notable events in April. Not to be confused with the only events in April, they just sent us a report to Acton Chapley of what they consider the top ten or fifteen, and when we reference deputy, it doesn't always mean our contract deputy. I just leave the names out, just to move it along. So that's that.
Do those reports have individual names in there?
Yes.
Okay.
And I try to skim them and avoid them.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Some might be sitting in your audience, so just in case. I mean, not tonight, for example, but sometimes they are. Tonight, you're clear.
You'll be conscious about these, you know?
When you got that, I don't know.
You got in your orange jumpsuit?
All right, next is the bar, the, the bar. The board know that we received two local license requests for barn lights and iron tales. If you're blessing, I'm gonna schedule them on the same night. See why not? We'll have them probably on June fourth is what I'm looking at to meet all of our legal requirements. Last is to personally invite you and everybody out in TV land to a spaghetti dinner that Neighbors Helping Neighbors will be having on May thirtieth. It's gonna be from four to seven, and it is going to be for our Manchester slash Walsh family who lost all of the contents in the fire that they were renting with no rental insurance, so we wanna help them and the kiddos get back on track. So that's gonna be on the thirtieth. If you can't make it, don't worry. I will sell you a ticket in advance that I will then donate to one of our fine men or women in Acton that I think might be able to use a nice warm meal.
I love that.
Hint, hint. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Police on update, Tom?
Um, I have nothing to do.
Okay. Ed?
Nothing.
John? Oh, Dan, I'm sorry, Dan, I skipped.
Don't worry, I was thinking about it.
Have my finger over your name.
Well, first of all, I apologize I wasn't here last week. I had a personal family matter, and I appreciate your folks' understanding. Last two weeks, I can't remember. The sixth, Phil Caruso, our EMA director, had a shelter training. I was happy to go to the first hour of that. I was really excited. There's like sixteen residents who showed up. I don't know what the guys named, the head honcho guy of the EMA, he was there. He was really excited. Everyone there was really excited, so I just wanna give kudos to Phil for all the incredible work and energy that he's built up and getting people excited to do a lot of these trainings. With that being said, this past Thursday, the rec had a meeting with coaches. There are four coaches who are gonna be leading these clinicals. They're not doing games. They kinda went over some like drills and skills. They sort of schedule out for these clinicals. They have five scheduled. They are based off of the coaches' schedules, so if you follow the Facebook page, they have those dates out. The first one already happened. If anyone is interested in supporting the coaches and helping out with these, these little clinicals, you do need to let Amanda, the rec director, know and also come to town hall to get a background check before you can help out with those clinicals. And if there's any changes or updates about those scheduled dates, the rec director will make that call by noon on the day of the event. So if there's like bad weather, you should know by noon o'clock whether or not they are holding that clinical. And the next rec committee meeting is May nineteenth at six P M. The Forest and Conservation Committee had their meeting yesterday. They elected their new officers, so Michael Benjamin was re-elected as chair of the committee. John Fatula was elected as the secretary slash vice chair of the committee. They are talking, I know Michael talked with Jennifer about putting up signs. They're gonna be releasing a thing on their page explaining what these signs are for. They're gonna put it on town property. We've discussed it here at SLU quite a couple times, just letting people know, you're now on town property. So they're gonna be doing like an informational campaign about the purpose behind those signs and when to expect them. And their next meeting is June tenth. And then Fire Department, I know a couple weeks back, someone asked Mark Roy to do like a kind of comparison on survey. And we got that information back, which I think we'll talk about at some point later, and I think I should show it to Chief Hammond, who we talked about later too.
David, if I can, regarding the conservation force, because I just thought of it. I did hear back from Lenkowski, who spoke to the real estate agent, and they are hopeful that the town will be able to close on that land by the end of May. Maybe the first week of June, remember, we authorized Joe to sign on behalf of the town, so we just need to know what it's done. And they're well aware of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth and what that means to the money, so when I spoke to the realtor last week, he is confident it's still gonna happen before the end, and he says we're closer.
Did that vote have a time limit on when the money needed to be spent?
It was, it was for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
It didn't, it didn't authorize it to be rolled over, so it's implied that, you know, like all of the ones that has to be spent.
Okay, John?
The school committee, they met last Thursday, and they have kids that are gonna be going to, I think it's Michigan State, the Odyssey to the Mind competition. They had them there, and the school gave them a five hundred dollar check, which brings them up to just about seven thousand dollars that they've raised for their trip, so.
What was the goal? Did they need to sort of?
I think it was about that. I think, I, the teacher said that that would basically cover everything that they needed to do. And they also talked about the kids doing the testing with the iReady program, and they're above average in the country with the iReady, and especially in the reading portion of it. So the kids are doing really well with that. And the last thing that they had is they have a few extra kindergarten students, and they're going to be, I guess, when we have our special town meeting, piggybacking with us to try to get another kindergarten teacher, or another teacher.
Yeah, so Mr. Ross reached out to me. He thought maybe he could get on the June tenth, when we talked about the timeline. He understood that that wasn't an option. Once he got final numbers together, we were gonna, we're gonna bring it to the board to see if he wanted to put it on the secret ballot. I indicated to him it may not happen until, you know, July or August, depending on when the ambulance bids, it's snowplowing. We need all that to come together first, so.
I knew he was gonna reach out to you and see if you had a date.
Yeah, I mean, until.
I wasn't there, but I watched the meeting and I.
Yeah, I did speak to him, but we've gotta get all our ducks in a row first, then they can certainly add on if the vote proves it.
Do you, this might be a random question. Do you know what the, so if they need to add another teacher with these new students, do you know about number of students? Is it like they have to have a, like a teacher, just a ratio, what they hope to be, this new teacher ratio?
They, and this was from the chairman, they've had a history of, for twenty kids, they'll have two teachers. And right now, they're at about twenty-two, and they may be getting a twenty-third. They're not quite sure yet. I know he did a pre-K head count today, last Thursday, sorry. And they're pretty good in pre-K, but because they've got now two or three extra kids, they're thinking that the one teacher that they dropped, you may need to add back in.
What's the cost on that?
Um, I don't know approximately what it is.
I mean, the total will be on the, will have to be on the ballot question.
It'll be, it'll be on, yeah, whenever we have the special town meeting for ambulance and other things. Planning board, so last Thursday night, zoning board of appeals met for the first time in, I guess, the dog's age, and they couldn't help the people that came before them, because there was nothing for them to really rule on. So they've sent them back to the planning board. They'll be on tomorrow night's agenda, along with the solar company that is looking to put up a two-acre farm over on Kelly Orchard. They'll be coming in, I think, for another six months to get everything done, get everything ready for their plan. And cemetery, I don't have anything on.
I have no update on anything, so. Department head, community chair updates, town clerk.
He surprises you, he'll be on there?
Yeah.
So I've asked Mr. Gregory Kane to join us tonight, and he's gonna go over the podium for me. Thank you very much. So I asked Greg to come here tonight for a few reasons. First, I wanna, you know, just to kinda give you a little background. When we hire assistants to work in the window, they start out as assistants, so that means that they don't get any title, there's no recognition. They're essentially an hourly employee doing day-to-day office tasks. It takes some time usually before we'll, you know, deputize them or decide what direction they're going in, if they're a good fit. Greg has reached his one-year anniversary with the town of Acton, so congratulations on that. He has gotten himself certified and has started taking some elections trainings. He's taken some motor vehicles, limited and new. He's working very hard in vitals. He is becoming a master of C V R, which is our voter registration. He's doing extremely great job. He's pleasant and polite, and I have deputized him. He's an official deputy town clerk, tax collector, and I thought he needed to be in front of the board tonight to hear from you.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Congratulations, incredible work.
I appreciate it. I appreciate all the townspeople and all of your support, as well, and your mentorship.
Yeah, we just wanted to put a face on the camera. I asked him to stay, and he was kind enough to. Cheryl's here to give him a little support. Lauren, of course, is with the kiddos, or she would be here, but we've really got a good group. Everybody's working well together, and it's a big accomplishment for one year. So I just thought it was important for you guys to, to hear that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, fire chief.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to, uh, get permission, I suppose. I'm looking, working with our EMA director, I believe he spoke to you guys a couple weeks ago, about a multi-band radio that we're, between him and I, I've worked on. He's got the technical, the technical experience, and I got a little bit just working with the radio shop. So I've come up with a, a plan that I'd like to start executing tonight. These radios, so let me back up. The current radios we currently use are about fifteen hundred bucks each. One does V H F frequencies, one does U H F frequencies. This new radio I'm looking to transition to puts everything in one radio. So I don't wanna have to worry about my staff grabbing the wrong radio, because they're, they're identical with a difference in the antenna. So I'm looking to move into this era of multi-band radios. Technology's come a long ways, done my research. And far as the best bank for the buck to the radio shop is a brand called Tate. Comes in, single radio, a price tag of about thirty-four hundred bucks. So I have in my budget to purchase new radios, to try to phase out old radios. So I'm looking to basically get permission to spend this from my radio shop. My current vendor that we use supplies it, does all work. Other options are significantly more expensive than this. Motor rollers pushing eight to ten grand.
Per radio.
Per radio for this multi-band setup.
And these are also, these are also future-proof too, right?
Yep.
Oh, well, it should be.
Future-proof, so.
So this, this.
If more bands become available, it'll work.
It does digital, which a lot of places are going digital, just 'cause the way technology's going, V H F and U H F all on radio. So like I said, this brand, the Motorola brand, and then there's a, there's a brand called Harris, which is again about six thousand, six to seven thousand dollars.
Is that the one, because Phil was talking to us about that radio, the New Zealand one?
It was, yeah, it was the thirty-four hundred dollar one.
Yeah, this is the Tate, this is the Tate one that he was talking about. Him and I have talked about trying to get us moving in that direction, so.
Are these handheld?
Yes, yes, very, very similar to this. This just only does U H F, so. My plan is to get one, make sure we like it, get it set up, program it appropriately, make sure we aren't making adjustments. And then in July, when the new unit kicks in, I'd like to buy one more. And I've written, part of that EMS grant that I, that spoke about a couple weeks ago, I've written for two more. So my, my plan is to get one to me, one to the deputy chief, and two to the duty group, and then everybody.
Start way up, working way down.
Yeah, to make sure it's gonna work, and then I'll just, I'll get it out to the staff to make sure it's bulletproof.
Would this have helped the other day?
Uh, I, for sure, for sure. The other days, if, so we're talking about yesterday's fire, so. Yesterday's fire, those that don't follow stuff on Facebook, town of Acton had an eleven-acre woods fire. Eventually went to three alarms. I had numerous trucks apprehended. I was the incident commander. Luckily Sanford showed up with a command vehicle, had a crossband repeater in it, like I talked about, which was able to, I, because it was on Acton Ridge, a lot of New Hampshire companies that come on out into town, obviously. So him was able to crossband York County Fire Four, which is one of our operational channels, and V Fire Twenty-One, which is on the V H F, which is one a lot of New Hampshire towns use for their operations. Were able to combine it into one, like I spoke about before, which made stuff a lot easier, but I, having that ability, if I needed it, would be helpful. In just in that portable radio. It wouldn't solve the communication problem, but.
And that, I'm sorry, just I wanna clarify for the board, what he's asking for tonight, because the radio is already part of the budget. What he's asking for is to waive the bid process, because it's over, it's because it's thirty-four hundred dollars. That's what he's looking for permission for. He already hasn't the budget to purchase it. That was cleared in the budget season, so.
What's the functional difference between the thirty-four hundred dollar one and the eight thousand dollar one? What do you get for eight thousand dollars?
Not a lot. The radio is a little bit beefier, a little more structurally sound. It comes.
Feature-wise, any difference?
It comes NFPA compliant, so it's, can stand the heat a little bit longer. The mic on this, on that Harris is like the size of my cell phone, and it's got a wire on it that's probably like that thick, stands to eat more. That's the biggest difference I could find, other than the structural stuff, but for the price and for what, how we're gonna use them here, we're not, you know, big city departments doing, you know, dozens of calls a day, so they're not gonna get the abuse, so I think we'd be, to try to get more bang for the buck with this one then.
Ultimately, how many you wanna buy?
Good question. My short thought right now, like I said, is the four right now immediately, with the approval of that grant. And then how we proceed, proceed further, I'd like to get one on every truck, which that's six additional. So at some point, we phase them in over time. What we do next budget process, we budget for them, but nothing I'm looking to execute on the spot, other than getting the four, one now, one after July first, and then the two on the grant to get us going.
So you don't, you think you probably only have enough to purchase one radio right now, safely?
Correct.
You mentioned that this was something we talked with the EMA director, their plan, would it be from this budget or future EMA? Would the EMA director be getting one of these radios as well?
We, we, I would say yes, at some point, but how we fund that one, that's a different story.
We're still watching the fire department line, the EMA line, it's in more on closely, so, plus he wants to be able to get this and make sure it functions and works the way it wants, and get him comfortable with it, and then we'll continue to look at the budget as we get closer to June thirtieth.
That was the goal Phil and I is that, yes, he would have one of these radios. It does, it does fire, it does everything we could possibly need and he could possibly need.
So once you field test this, how many units in total would you be looking to buy? You get the one unit, yeah, how many?
So three more immediately, if I can, if I can, if I get the grant, and obviously July's budget, and then six more after that would be the goal.
But not in, not in next year's budget?
Correct. There's nothing, yeah, nothing.
So thirty-five thousand dollars to get you?
Yeah, I think I tell you, yeah, eight thousand, yeah, so I'd say, yeah. As time goes, but right now, I'm just phasing it in, I don't.
And you're doing, I'm sorry, I just wanna follow, and you're phasing it in because of concern for money, or you're not sure that this is exactly what you want?
Money, money. Just because I'm trying to work with what I already have, right, to get it going. Then we could, I did plan for next year's budget in this. This is something we've worked on, and then doing, like I said, working with Phil with the technical specs. He thought this was the best bank for the bucks. I'm trying to get now, one now, one in July, we could use them, the two on the grant, and then.
The current ones work still, too.
Yeah, correct. My current ones still work. But I would say I got some that are like twenty years old, so.
So I guess really the question here is, does town board need a radio?
No, it's just waiving the bid process is all the exact for us.
I guess where I was going is, is if we're gonna have a, a special town meeting coming up?
Uh, we're gonna have a referendum vote.
Some, oh, it's a, it's a referendum vote?
Yes, it's a referendum.
I don't know, this seems pretty important to have these radios, given the way you're currently trying to switch back and forth. That's gotta be rather cumbersome, working in the field with that.
Well, yeah, I can, yeah, I gotta have two radios in one.
Do you have, you've had them both for now?
No, I only have one. I have the one that I'm, this is set the page right now, so.
This is what he wants, we just.
Well, I guess the question, the, the policy says what, three, how many thousand bucks?
No, I'm not worried about the bidding.
Well, no, no, what we're, we're gonna figure out.
Anything over the five thousand, four thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred.
Ask off the grid.
Throw the bid.
Anything over a thousand.
Only everything over a thousand.
You just have to have comparable prices, and that's what I was getting to. I'm just trying to make this easy, explain why we'd be doing that.
And Tom, I'll work with him to see if it's something, when we start looking at the special town meeting articles, I hear about that.
Because I'm suggesting, why not buy the ten?
Yeah, get the lower ones.
Buy the eight more, and then everyone's operating on the same equipment. Sounds like the town babble.
If we're here.
But if he.
If he, if he buys the radio right now, make sure this is what he got.
Yeah, no, I get that.
That's what I would do, yeah. Get the one anyways.
But instead of waiting, you're saying voters.
Yeah, I don't, if he, if he says it's what you want. It's what you want, I would just ask for it, it's not that.
Wait, how do they compare to the icons that you have, as far as quality, usage?
I think they're gonna be similar. We've been running Icon for ever, yeah, really forever. I mean, I think that probably had the last one roll, that thing was like. Yeah, so I haven't had any problems with Icon. We take care of ourselves over there, so far as comparing it to that, I think it's very similar.
So they're main cellsies?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have any issue.
For this one, yeah.
Yeah.
I have no issue with that at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where are meetings contract?
All right, so I just passed out to you two different documents. One is for District One North, District Two South. David will explain to you how we got to this, but the idea for tonight is just a first reading to take home and go through redline, and hoping to put it back on the agenda next week. We wanna get this out to bid. Soon as you guys finalize it, we can send it to legal and we can get going on it.
So what I did is I had a pile of contracts in front of me and going through them, and, and it's funny, I, I, I do these, just what I do, but some of these towns I've never been on, it's pretty wild, some, some of the stuff they put in them. But what I did is I took a little bit of from this town, that town, Chapley, obviously familiar with that one. Kinda used it as a format, took some stuff out that I thought was unnecessary, and we added in stuff that I thought was, obviously, the way the road commissioner's doing it now, you, well, when it was the north end and south end, because that's where you kinda have to figure it, that's, it's gonna be pit out, is that, you know, added in here that the, um, the north end will be taking care of the transfer station in the town hall, just like they did before, and the south end will be taking care of the tran, um, fire station. But what I did was, if you look at some of these contracts, it would state that, and I'll use Chapley for instance, because Chapley's got two contractors. They're doing, it's a split, kinda like this will be. A lot of the other ones are one, so you kinda, you didn't have this issue. But the Chapley contract, in the contractor states that we have to keep the shed clear of snow, da, 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 but it doesn't say which, which contractor. So, you know, of course, in a perfect world, and I get along with the guy we work with, so we just do it. But I think, I like, I wanted to have it dictated here that this person takes care of this, this person takes care of that, so there's no, no issues there down the road. So, so what I did is I, I set it up for the south end. District Two would be taking care of keeping the sand shed clear and the sand in the, the public sand building. Instead of having to worry who's gonna take care of it. Uh, the, you know, talking around, um, one of the issues was the amount of salt allowed in the allowance, um, you know, nobody wants a, a limit on salt, but the problem is if the wrong contractor gets it and just abuses that, you have to have some sort of, uh, something to go back on. Shapley, um, lets us, um, we're allowed six hundred and forty-two points, something done, it's, I don't know why I put point something, but, um, that's shared in between the two contractors. So, the problem is the way they do it is, it's in one building, and if one contractor, which they do this, will go in and use it all up, when it comes to seven hundred fifty ton, and there's a, there's a, a difference in, in the contract, who's paying for it? So, what I did in this contract is I separated the salt, and I increased the salt usage from, uh, and of course, this is just a goal. We wanna stay lower than this is possible, obviously, because, um, the, the, whoever the contractor is not paying for the salt. Okay, but, uh, what I did is I split it, four hundred, four hundred, eight hundred ton for the season, and obviously, in the contract, it will say, if, if it's a bad season, da, 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 come back and we can okay more. Um, the road commissioner will have to, uh, in the contract, the road commissioner will be keeping an eye on, make sure it's not being abused, uh, which it can be.
So, it's all coming out of the, the building anyways, you've got, you have your time this time?
Yeah, the towns, yeah.
So, so what'll happen, and, 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 and back in the day when I was road commissioner, uh, I also lowered the sand down to like four thousand yards, because we're up in the salt amount, okay, that way they can put salt on each side of the building, so you can separate it, so nobody can say, hey, I'm not paying the extra, if they abuse it, um, nobody should be paying for any salt at all, totally if it. Uh, and I've seen this done before, where guys are just going dumping out like it's sand, and just, because they don't wanna plow, you know, we don't want that. Uh, so, you, you have to put some sort of catchdown there, that makes, keep, keep them honest. So, I'm not saying that or not, uh, but we don't know who's gonna get the contract, and we wanna make sure that we're good.
How many times would you, in a typical storm, uh, let's say six inches, how many times would you fill a truck up with salt?
Well, it all depends, it's just a snowstorm, you know, we've, we go, we'll go out, treat, and it was just snowing, hit the holding corner, it's not very often. If it's a crappy mess, you know, you could be sanding it every hour, you can be putting another load.
I guess where I was going, is there a log that they have to maintain, that says when they go in and, you know, fill the truck with salt, but there's no entry for that?
No, so, um.
Should there be?
No, no, I mean, it, it's just, at the end of the day, what's gonna happen is, is, um, they're probably not gonna do it, and, um, you know, one side of town might get more snow, you know, we've had times where, nor, north side of town's got snow, the other side don't, you know, so, um, but, um, I don't know, we never, we never talked about doing that, but by splitting the piles in half, um, that, that'll keep everybody, and it worked for us, it worked.
So, you gotta split it here?
So, what you do is, yeah, you have, you know, we just, what you do is you put a pile on one side, pile on the other, north side, south side, south side, north side, whatever. Um, and they, and if they don't wanna put it all in one pile, that's their problem, they can do that, but I, on the paperwork, we're gonna split it four hundred, four hundred that way there, and they can argue about it after the fact, we've already done it here.
You'll allocate four hundred?
Yeah, yeah, so, if they feel like putting it in the same pile, it's their problem, but if there's ever an issue down the road, it's on them, so. Um, but, and the, the contract, the way it was set up before, the one that I signed, it's kinda like, there you go, you know, it's mutual, you do whatever, you know, so I like to make it a little bit more, uh, specific. Um, other than that, most of this contract is just parts and pieces of everybody else's contracts, I didn't change any of the word, other than, um, you know, we would, I deleted a lot of stuff, but, uh, uh, all the, uh, uh, payments, you know, insurance stuff, that's all the same. Um, so, Will, um, seeing to the road commissioner, you, you're gonna have one of these tonight, can we get one of these, so he can look over it?
On the board, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question, it may be a foolish one, but I see in here, it says, they talk about exhibits A, B, and C's, I never, I can get copies of those exhibits?
Yes, absolutely, and this is, just, you know, this is a very first draft, so I already have a couple of titles.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, absolutely.
So, um, yeah, we'll take a look at it, get your highlighter out, and, uh, we'll keep working on it. So, I might even think of something else, you know, but I like to keep it as simple as possible. I mean, some of these contracts are crazy, you know, go out, pre-treat, don't go out for three or four inches of snow, uh, they would dictate, make sure you take care of your corners, before you take care of any other road, and it would just dump stuff like that, it was just like, gone. Um, because all the roads are priority, I mean, you know, they, they litter it, at the end of the day, you put it on, make it black and white, and that's what I wanna keep it, so. Okey-dokey?
Good.
You good? Okay, you said about that, uh, wait, okay, Renaissance Fair.
Okay, at the, uh, end of, or at last week's meeting, um, the board did not vote on the Renaissance Fairs, we, uh, you instructed the individual to reach out to fire chief, to discuss plans, not so much scheduling, um, but I guess the question to Wayne is, did you have a conversation with anyone from the Renaissance Fairs from last Wednesday's meeting?
I have not, no email, no phone call, unless my staff took it, forgot to pass it on, I have not heard from them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Well, I guess we will, we will listen until next week, until they have gotten hold of it, does that sound like a plan?
Yep.
Okay, I'll see if we can specifically ask them to reach out to the, uh, before we made a decision.
And she sounded happy to do it.
Yep, okay, new business, ambulance bid opening.
All right, we received two. Someone left me a knife.
No, you won't do that, boy. Yeah, you put your knife. You know what, I'm dangerous with a knife, I'd have cut myself, so. What sheet of paper?
All right, I got it. All right, first one is from Autotronics, um, so, you know, I, I think really, it's very difficult to open these binders and, you know, read off a number on the front page, because, you know, the chances of them, you know, well, no, the, the chances of it actually being apples to apples without going through it, but I will certainly see if I can find you, Autotronics.
To be honest with you, I'd rather do the comparison before we hear any numbers, so we know what is included, make sure it's apples to apples.
Okay, this, do you say the numbers, please, fire?
I, I, I don't know, maybe others do, I, my preference would be.
I, I, myself, we're not making a decision on this tonight, so just blast out the number, then we'll look through it and see if it's all apples and apples, oranges, oranges, and then we'll let.
So, the base, um, it's a twenty-twenty-six Ford F five fifty, they got a base at four hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred, with everything they list out, um, price comes up to six twenty-three twelve.
Well, the four seventy.
You like the four seventeen?
I thought it was four seventeen.
Uh, I mean, that's with options, not to say it's all one, but he asked for.
Six twenty-three twelve. Four seventeen thousand eight hundred base.
One is from specialty vehicles. All right, so, twenty-twenty-six or newer Ford F fifty, um, base four fifty-one, five sixty-six, uh, with everything with the equipment, six fifty-five, four eighty-four. And again, rough numbers based on what we've seen, but Wayne and I will spend some time going through them.
Quality time.
I like the base numbers a lot better.
Yeah.
But, wow, you're pretty close, aren't you?
Don't be wise.
We're, we're down here all the way. When I heard that four seventeen at the beginning, I'm like, boy, I'm gonna deal.
Yeah.
I wish they would never have.
Either one of these, Wayne, is either one of these, the ambulance you have now?
What was the company?
Specialty.
Yes, one of them is.
Specialty vehicles.
Lifeline, the specialty vehicles.
Specialty, okay.
Yeah, which is where we, the same dealership bought the tank truck.
Okay, that's the one that they're asking for six fifty-five.
Yeah, that's just.
That's the same one, do you have the ambulance now?
Same company, yeah.
Did you, when you quoted this, I, I mean, obviously, we're gonna probably look through, I just, I just figured I'd ask you, did any of these companies give you a timeline?
Uh, I only spoke to one, Autotronics never reached back out to me to even give me an estimate when you guys asked for one, so, uh, I'm not real sure what his timeframe is.
That's the, that's the.
That's the Autotronics, life, the, that's the specialty vehicles one, uh, he indicated to me about a three year, thirty to thirty-six months. From the time of signing.
Are they, are they gonna be able to lock down that number, is this something I have to worry about?
No, I believe, I, I don't know, I, I'm assuming that's probably the number like we asked for, that that would be the number. Uh, I do know that since I had gotten pricing on the, uh, the stretcher, stair chairs and other stuff, those prices have significantly gone up since after the first of the year, um, so, and then obviously tariffs, I'm assuming are probably playing a factor in all this, but, uh, I do know the striker quote went up significantly.
Okay, I'll do paperwork, check it over.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Okay, Iron Tales Mass Gathering Permit.
So, big communication with, uh, Mr. Martinez at Iron Tales the last few weeks, um, he submitted, uh, back in April, his mass gathering, um, request like he did last year, he essentially put a bunch of them together, um, I had a conversation with him, and he understands why the board has separated that out, basically to tie into the liquor licenses that they do for these individual events, which doesn't affect him, but mass gathering affects him. So, he understands that if it's not, um, a continuous event, that he's gonna apply for them separately. So, for tonight, he's asking for approval, remember the planning board gives him three hundred people, uh, mass gathering would allow him to go over that. Um, for Bike Week, which is June fourteenth to the twenty-second, he's got a crazy train outdoor contract rave show, and outdoor contract, and actually two rave shows during that week, and outdoor contract, concerts, and burnout competitions. He's got, he's got liability insurance, paid the fees, met all the requirements, um, so it's just mass gathering, go over the three hundred people.
So, is it just for Bike Week, or is he asking for others?
Yes, because, he's not, he hasn't paid or filled out an application for the others, so we're just addressing that one tonight.
So, just one time, that we don't.
For Bike Week.
That's coming up.
He's met all the requirements?
He's met all the requirements, yes, um.
Make a motion to, uh.
You got something there for me to make a motion from? Someone came out of here.
Just for Bike Week.
I'll make a motion to the pool to get mass camera permit for the Bike Week.
June fourteen.
June, June fourteen, June fourteen Bike Week event.
Seven hundred.
Favor?
Fourteen to the twenty-second, yeah, we've got one form we needed to fill out, and other than that, it's good.
Okay. Fire department, hourly rates for special event charges.
Um, as we had told the Renaissance Fair, we've certainly told, um, Iron Tales, we tell everyone that comes in for mass gathering, anywhere there's a requirement for there to be fire EMT coverage, um, they understand that the prices have been going up, the Acton Fair pays a rate. We've got rates that are several years old now, and with the employees, um, hourly rates increasing, the cost of the vehicles, um, the gas to get down there, the fire chief and I is gonna come on up and have a conversation about, um, he's looking to increase.
He's the one that keeps walking back there.
Looking to increase, so right now, we know that the employees, the range is, you know, let's say between twenty-four and twenty, twenty-nine dollars an hour with the increases that will start in July, he's looking to have some incentive for the employees to pick up these extra shifts, and is hoping that the board will set, um, a new hourly rate just for those, they would be exempt from overtime, um, based on, on the rates, and, um, we need to know what those numbers are before we can make a recommendation to you next week, to decide what the da- daily rate is for these events.
So, when you say exempt from overtime, you mean, they work forty hours here, and they pick a shift up down there, and it's not gonna hit overtime, correct?
Right, right, the law says that they can be exempt as long as we're paying them more than the time and a half that the overtime would be, and I did put it out with, uh, Mark Roy today as well.
You got some rates on us.
I think that's crucial. I am requesting that we set rates, or an hourly rate of sixty dollars an hour for the staff to cover that event. We'll obviously be doing those events to cover that.
Hundred percent will be covered by the applicant.
How many, how many people do you put down there? Do you rotate them during?
I would have to double check the language in the mass gathering ordinance, but currently, it's been one EMT.
They're allowed to request more, and if somebody signs up for the shift, but, yeah, we, we follow the mass gathering, depends on the amount of people.
The one, the one that you're talking about, how many people is that one covering, the mass gatherer? I don't remember.
What do you mean?
You, it doesn't have a certain amount, no, that might be from police, that must be police, I'm sorry, gotta have it myself, so, um, okay.
I'm not sure the mass gathering spells out how many has to be on there, if I recall.
But I, to not insert foot, I would wanna review it to make sure, I don't think it does.
Yeah, we, and, and, and there's a minimums that we've set, you know, one truck, one employee, I mean, basically the amount of people, I mean, the, the, when you guys approve these mass gatherings, you can specify that, I mean, if, if Renaissance says there's gonna be five thousand people down there on the weekend, you might insist on two or three people, I mean, that's up to you.
If you, if you send, say, one truck down, there were one employee, that's, typically, don't you know have two ride, run man a truck, due to?
We don't know how to send one.
Yes, ideally, but I don't wanna overcommit ourselves either of not being able to fill that request, so, one would be my minimum. Sure, I would love to have two down there, so there's two people, but I'll also get two on duty that I'm sure in events like that, they'll be floating in and out, uh, down there with them, so, one is my minimum, for an event like.
Do we ever send one?
What do you mean?
I mean, do you ever send one down there, I thought, well, look, thinking most of the bills that we send out to the different people, that's always been to you.
One is the minimum, so, uh, that's what I'd like to see, yes, would I like to see two, sure, but I don't wanna commit to say, yeah, I can provide two, and then I want more prices on a special.
So, that's something you determine, Wayne, whether it's more than one?
Yeah, it has been, yeah.
Yeah, he can require.
Okay, so, the, uh, the organization holding the event knows that it will be a minimum of one, it may be more, at your discretion.
No, it's a, it's a discussion with that.
Well, I guess it depends on what the language is in the ordinance, what does it say, I don't remember what it says.
I guess, go ahead.
I guess the thing is that, is, what I'm getting from is saying that if one is the minimum, that is determined before the event, it's not like the day of, you're gonna say, no, we have two people, you have to pay for two people, it's one is set, and that's what we're, they're picked, right, is that what, make sure it's like set to the person who has to pay for those?
It's just, it's just like a fair, they require one, they require an EMT there to provide first aid, right, so there's at least one there. Yes, the fair, we put a fire truck down there, we try to, you know, it's, it's, it's also a PR event, obviously, we're interacting with the community, so, uh, that's how this kind of event is, but.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, Wayne, is, um, the organization holding the event, who's gonna pay for this, should know how many people you're gonna be assigning down there.
Yeah.
Can you do that when you don't know, and necessarily you have enough manpower to cover?
I'm gonna staff one down there, that would be.
So, if you do two, does that mean they're gonna be billed for two, and when will they know that?
Yeah.
See, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, sure, sure, and, and I would refer back to the language of the, of the, of the mass gathering permit, if we wanna put more than one down there, then I say we need to update that.
No, no, we, we've got it anyways, we know that, so, my question was, so, you said one?
Minimum.
Minimum, but, if, say, are, are we looking at the?
If you decide that it's gonna be two, when do you make that decision, and when does the people that are to pay for that know and agree to that two?
That's what I'm getting at, that we ought to be clear to them, and.
Hundred percent, so I don't know what that threshold.
Well, what have you done in the past, have you done more than one at any of these events that we've had in town?
I'll have to go back and look at the hundred percent.
Well, at the end of the day, if you look at it, and you say, okay, is one EMT good for a thousand people?
Yeah, yeah, when there's nothing going on, right?
Yeah.
Sure, you could quite complain for the what if all day long, you're not, still not enough people.
Does the mass gathering permit specify any of this?
Yeah, I don't know, that's what, I don't know they.
Do you think it does, Wayne?
I, I don't know, I think it just says it needs to have an E, I think it's just in civil language, I don't think there's a number set to it.
Does an EMT know any notes are in there, or does it need EMT, right?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it seems to me if you had a standard, based on the number of people, and assuming that you can find people, uh, that would be available to do it, then that's the high threshold, that's the high number, two, three, whatever, if you only get one, you charge them for one, but they'll know that you're authorized to have three there, for example, and they better be prepared to pay that.
Right, I mean, perfect world, we already covered it, two people, right, they're not, somebody by themselves, um, so, two people, yeah, that would be ideal. Um, so two people, yeah, that would be ideal.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're looking at this the right way, though, the problem is, we're only looking at it at who, at one scope here, we're looking at the Renaissance Fair. But at some point in life, there might be other stuff that moves on in, so when we turn around and start looking at this mask gathering, say we just, say the acting affair decides to have a wood stop thing, or something, you know, some kind of like that technique before, again, you know.
We already talked about Iron Tales, right, like, Iron Tales is, is not, probably not gonna have five thousand people. So if we put a number in there to accommodate that five thousand people, now I gotta hold him, you know, that business account to that same standard. So if we build some flexibility in the ordinance, I think.
Yeah, yeah, you do a step, you know, if you're under two hundred and fifty or three hundred people, this is this.
Yeah.
But when you take something like that, where you may have two thousand people there, one day.
One, one person is not enough.
One person wouldn't be enough, you know, you need two people, because remember that year they had the heat, remember, had heat strews and stuff? Well, you got one E M T there, well, there's no more E M Ts, you know, I know you never have enough, but, but we, we have to have some sort of step that, if the bigger the crowd gets, the more E M Ts.
Right.
You know, maybe you have to have an ambulance there instead of just an E M T, or whatever. Um, but that's, that's just where I was trying to get to, is at some point.
But I think the whole ordinance needs some updating.
Yeah.
Taking, taking like, you know, reach out to your crew.
Yeah, I think once we set, so, talking with Tom Hister, I think if we set that rate, then I plan on posting that sooner than later, and I think I'll probably have no problem doing that, right? I think it is a struggle, but I think it's a struggle for people to go down there at straight time and be like, yeah, I'm wasting my, my two weekends in July, you know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
This, this happens in other businesses, you know, the detail rate like that, so I think this will help incentivize that for.
And we're, we're charging, you know, the brush truck goes down?
Utilities going down there just because it carries equipment.
So, not just.
I can't send the ambulance down there.
Oh, that's the rate that we're gonna present to you next week, but we had to get through whether you're gonna pay the employee first, so that Wayne and I can figure out, one employee leads truck.
Rather not send the ambulance down.
I can't say, I, I'm not, like, I, uh, Tom Hister and I talked to them, but not, I'm not committing the ambulance, so there we go, one ambulance, right? So if I committed to that event, and I'm charging, and I'm now I'm billing for it, now I have no ambulance staffs out, right, so I'm not.
Oh, that's perfect.
At least the employee can stay there.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have the first aid building that the fair lets us use still, and all that stuff for these other events, so.
Maybe we should buy another ambulance.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't specify how many people per, it doesn't, it doesn't specify. Um, I think in speaking to the acting fair, and correct me if I'm wrong, that most of these, it's at their request just as a benefit to their event, but it says that the operator of the gathering will contact the local ambulance chief and advise him, and a mass gathering will be held in the approximate number of people attended.
Okay.
That's it.
So I think that we're doing them a service, and that's why they invite us down there, it's, I think it's at their request of how many, with the chief's recommendation, but you're gonna find that they're gonna want more than one.
Yeah, we could, we could rebuild that ordinance.
Well, yeah, we, we, you think about it, in all the years we've been doing this stuff, we never did ask gathering permits for a long time.
I think they have to have people down there on the state law.
Because we never did one for the, the, the fair, because they don't need one, so.
They don't, do they have to, like, I, I believe, and I, I wish one of them would, but I, I believe that based on the, some of their regulations to get their state licensing, they have to have an E M T, they have nothing to do with the town acting.
Correct.
So, so nothing to do with the town of actions, ordinance, there is a state requirement, whether it's agricultural fair or this type of Renaissance fair, they have someone on ground, so we're doing them a service essentially. They could hire an outside agency as well, right, they don't, it doesn't have to be the acting fire rescue department, just so we're clear.
Right.
That's my.
So, they're not, they're not bringing these people because of the mask gathering ordinance, they're bringing it in because of state mandates required.
Is there other places that would hire up to do that?
Isn't there, ambulance?
I would say yes, but I don't know what they're staffing with, so I either, so.
They're probably gonna charge you more.
I would, and I would say it's probably gonna be probably charging way more than we're gonna charge.
Yeah.
If I had to get a, private, a private company for profit, yeah.
Just wanna make sure that whenever we charge, we cover, we don't, you don't lose an end of that.
Well, no, we're gonna fit back around the ambulance and the time that, you know, the scheduling, there's a lot of things that.
So, yeah, you're gonna give a one lump sum number between the vehicle and the, yeah.
Which we'll do for next week.
Right now, okay.
So.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
So.
Did you, to approve the sixty dollar per hour, we'll work that in the next week's formula, and the motion on the total package.
At that time.
I'm in favor of the success, I don't know if there's any qualms or concerns.
Thank you.
No, we're not.
I just, let me restart.
Okay, fire, first, resignation.
I've misplaced it, but I'm sad to announce that Nancy Rumah will be resigning as her post of a Z D A member, and also as an election clerk, um, for personal reasons.
Alright, well, we need a couple more people for Z D A.
Any objections?
Take a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we accept Nancy Rumah's resignation with regret.
Okay.
Hold on, favor?
How long has she been doing the election role?
Oh, my goodness, well, I mean, I've been here for twenty years, she's in my first, so I said before that.
That's an incredible life of service.
Actually, she was a selectman.
Thank you to Nancy for that service.
She would've done it during selectman years, but yeah, at least for the twenty years.
Twenty years, wow.
Over, checking ladies.
Okay.
So, yes, John, two Z D A openings now, two alternate positions, and they will have something else coming before them, so, anybody else interested in Z D A?
That's a good way for someone to get involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's so few and far between.
What do you gotta know?
Well, the town's attorney goes to represent the zoning ordinance, just.
They don't need to know that.
The zoning ordinance, no, it's all laid out in the ordinance, very much so.
You know.
The attorney is gonna protect the town and not let the grand variance is.
And it doesn't need very often, does it?
Maybe it, once a year at best.
And we didn't have one.
We had one, I think Ron Colson, do you remember our friend Ron?
Yeah.
Ron Colson, he was our last one.
Three years ago.
Ah, I bet, fine, yeah.
Been gone anyways, I don't, so, yeah.
Yeah, very few.
Okay, um, any public comment? Okay, well, I'm going to hear a motion.
I'm going to do a adjourn at seven P M.
Okay.
Okay, good night.